All right, good evening, everyone. I will call our meeting to order here. Welcome to the Arcadia Unified School District Board of Education Meeting on December 10th, 2024. It is 7:01 PM. And I am calling this meeting in order, which is being recorded and live streamed on YouTube and can be accessed at boardmeeting.ausd.net. We'll call all our present except for Dr. Hirsue. And we are to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Chavez?
Thank you. Would you all please rise, face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Chavez. And you have inspiration as well?
I do. Thanks, Mr. President. Good evening. So, I was driving today, listening to jazz radio, and a tune came on that I was not familiar with, but I was just kind of listening and going along until a lyric caught my ear. And it's a little bit Yogi Berra-esque. I think I just made a word up. But it says, "Don't wait to feel better before you start to feel good." And it struck a note with me because it aligned a lot with some things we heard during a session at CSBA last week. So, we all attended the School Board Annual Education Conference. And we were fortunate to hear Dr. Laurie Santos. She's a Yale professor and the host of a Happiness Lab podcast. And she shared like 10 tips for how to be happier. And her work really came about because she was head of one of the residential colleges, and there were so many stressed out, nervous, anxious, overwhelmed students. And she thought, okay, we've got an issue. And so she started teaching a class called like How to Be Happier This Year, and pulled together a bunch of research to just share some behaviors and things we can do to help ourselves feel better. And I'm not going to list all 10 that she shared with us. But I just felt that there's some pressure at this time of year sometimes to feel happy. But it's really easy to be nervous and overwhelmed at this time of year because there's a lot going on. But there are some things we can do to help ourselves, and they don't take a lot of time. So, you can create your sense of well-being. You've got to connect socially. And the caveat here is even when you don't feel like it, but if you make yourself do it, it helps. You've got to be present in the moment. When it feels great, that's easy. But you need to be present in the moment even when it doesn't feel good. She says, "Be present in the moment even when it feels..." Something that rhymes with happy, but starts with a CR, but I didn't feel like that was a board-appropriate word to share. I think you can figure it out. Do something for others. Don't stay stuck in your own self. We do a lot of self-care that revolves around maybe a nice massage or a quiet something. But take the time to do something for someone else, and that actually makes you feel better. And take a moment to practice gratitude. We just had Thanksgiving. But again, at this time of year, I think it's really easy to get outside of ourselves with all of the hype. Let us be grateful for what we have and the folks that we have around us. So, I just think we need to... It's so easy to fall into that trap of feeling overwhelmed and lonely and stressed, comparing ourselves to others or what they have. And when you get in that state, you kind of get stuck there sometimes. But like that song said, "Don't wait to feel gooood before you can get better." You have to do the things that will help you feel better, then you will feel good. But it's not just going to happen on its own. You can play a role in it. So, again, don't wait to feel better before you start to feel good, which is a mouthful. But I do wish you all a very happy holiday season, and let's reach out and support one another and be grateful for what we have here in AUSD. Thanks.
Thank you. I am very grateful for that inspiring inspiration. All right. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Vargo, seconded by Mrs. Chavez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. This is 5-0. And student rep report, Mrs. Fann.
Hi, my name is Lefine, and I am the Link Crew Commissioner.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan, and I am the ASB Activities Commissioner. And this is the Board of Education Report dated December 10th, 2024. The Holiday Spirit Week took place from December 2nd to 6th. Students dressed up in festive gear and participated in lunch activities on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Outstanding athletes, performers, and scholars are picked to represent their organization every month. Club checks have concluded to ensure all clubs are on track for being recharged in the next school year. The first EDI Strategy Council was held on December 2nd. A Raising Canes fundraiser will be held on Friday, December 20th. Link Crew has held the Transition Advisory Board Elections, a leadership opportunity for juniors. The final freshman lunch meeting occurred on December 3rd, where students enjoyed holiday activities.
On November 16th, Vex Robotics placed 23rd out of 31 teams at the Rumble in the Jungle Regional held at Granada Hills Charter High School. On November 23rd, Engineering Design and Development Team scored 0, 2, and 1 points at the 2024 JPL Invention Challenge held at Costa Mesa High. Position standings are unknown. On the same day, Quiz Bowl placed 5th in the Triton Fall Tournament hosted by San Diego Quiz Bowl. On December 7th, Constitution Team placed 1st place in the We the People California Regional Team. On November 23rd, the Marching Band and AHS Color Guard participated in the Annual Arcadia Festival of the Bands and Southern California School Band and Orchestra Championship, placing 2nd in the 6A Division. Orchestra Dance Company held their annual charity show on December 6th. Orchestra and Choir are holding their winter concert on December 13th. On Friday, November 29th, the Girls Cross Country Team traveled to Clovis for the State Championship Meet. They scored 286 points and placed 7th in Division 1. As the fall sports season comes to a close, the winter sports season has officially begun. Boys Soccer played against Marshall High School on November 22nd, securing a 1-0 victory.
The Winter Pops Assembly will be held on December 13th showcasing various performing arts organizations. Senior Council concluded their first bonding event of the school year titled Frozen in Time on Friday, December 6th. Seniors enjoyed DIY snow globes, snowflake ornaments, reindeer brownies, and hot cocoa. On November 15th, juniors participated in carnival games, redeemed snacks, and ended the night with a movie showing of the movie Tangled. The Hoopcoming Tailgate before the Boys' Varsity Basketball Game against Pasadena will be held on January 10th. The POM Committee is currently holding their first pre-order fundraiser with Twinkle Tea from December 4th to December 11th, with the distribution date set for this Friday, December 13th. And freshman council successfully held their first bonding event, First Snowfall. And that concludes the board report.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Yee and students. Okay, we are to audience comments. We have no audience comments. And now to action items. 2023, 2024 Audit Report. Mr. Eslen.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to introduce Peter Glenn. He's a partner at the Nygro and Nygro Audit Firm. He'll be presenting both the district audit and the facilities bond audit for the 2324 school year. Before he jumps in with the good news, I'd just like to acknowledge Peter. This is his sixth and final year as our lead auditor, and he's been a great, a great support to the district. I know it's weird to say that you appreciate your auditor. I do, and we do. And I'd also like to show appreciation to Corinne Ruby, who's our accounting supervisor, and David Vong, our director, who provide all the information to Peter and also make sure that we're doing everything wonderfully well during the school year.
Thank you for that introduction. And I must say that I have appreciated working with the district all these years. The team that works in the business services is terrific, easy to work with, and always willing to get us whatever it is we ask for. And it's a great year to be able to say all these things because there were no findings, so nothing to sour it a little bit. But we are independent. I promise you that. We do our due diligence. And so if I could just back up, basically, the audit starts in the early spring months, late winter months. Every year usually, February, March. And then it progresses through into really the fall, when your next school year is starting. We look at it in phases so we can accomplish as much as possible throughout the year and before we wrap it up at the end. So, it includes site visits, testing of ASBs, coming out to the district, testing attendance, testing federal and state requirements, and then finally issuing the report and presenting it to yourselves. So, if we look at the audit in three ways, and we issue actually three letters in the report. We have a Government Auditing Standards Letter. And basically, what that is saying is, you know, were there any difficulties that the district had in any of its internal controls as far as financial matters, any of those? So, there were no issues there. And then the second letter we issue has to do with federal compliance. Was there any issues when it comes to federal compliance? The program we looked at, we don't look at every federal program every year. We kind of rotate them every three years based upon certain criteria, whether they're considered major, has to do with which ones spend the most of the federal funds. This year, it was the Child Nutrition Cluster, so your NSLP and all those associated programs. So, there were no issues there with that program. And then the last thing, last but not least, and getting bigger every year, we look at is the state compliance areas. And the state this year had three new areas that I can think of. There was the ELOP, which was a big one. There was the Arts and Music, the Prop 28 program. And then there was also a home-to-school transportation. So, that's actually been in existence for some time, but this was the first year we audited it. So, it's no small accomplishment, I want to say, that the district saw no findings in any of those areas because, you know, whenever there's a new audit area, it's very easy, especially with some of the, you know, the ELOP requirements and making sure you have the proper ratios of adults to students. That's been a tricky area. So, a really good job there by the district. So, again, if we break it into those three areas, there were no findings, and everything went well, and the financial statements were fairly stated. So, if there's any questions on any of those items, I would be happy to answer those. of those items, I would be happy to answer those.
No findings, no questions.
It was a great one hundred, Patri.
Okay, so I need a motion for this item.
I move to approve the twenty-two-three, twenty-four Audit Report.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Ang, seconded by Ms. E. Uh, any discussion from the board or student rep?
Just that it's impressive. That's a lot of work.
Indeed. All right. I will call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And, um, thank you and congratulations, Mr. Glenn. Oh, I guess we have one more, huh? Oh, I'll wait for it. Thank you. Um, Agenda item B, twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four Audit Report for Measure I, General Application Bond.
Thank you.
Mr. Eslen.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Glenn.
Jumped the gun, sorry. Uh, so, uh, for your district, um, you have, uh, bonds and congratulations on passing a, a new measure. Uh, this one is Measure I, and, um, this one i- requires a, a separate audit, uh, under Prop thirty-nine. And so we issue a separate audit report, and it is a performance audit and then a financial statement audit. That's the two pieces, if you will. It's combined into one report. But the financial statement audit, um, tests the, uh, transactions and also the balances in each, um, account class, if you will, uh, your, your balance sheet, and also your expenditures and revenues. So it tests each, uh, material item there and, um, make sure that the presentation is, is accurate. So that was the case, uh, when it comes to that. And then, uh, the performance audit tests the expenditures as to allowability. So it looks at the ballot measure, make sure that the expenditures that were incurred were appropriate, uh, were what the voters approved, uh, back, uh, when, when that voting took place in that measure. So in both cases, there were no exceptions. There were no findings. And, um, so again, a reason for, um, to be satisfied with, with what's going on in, in, in the caretaking of, of that, uh, that bond measure. If there's any questions, I can take those.
No questions. Okay, I need another motion for this item, please.
I'll move to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four Audit Report for Measure I, General Application Bond.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Ms. E., seconded by Ms. Chavez. Uh, any discussion, student rep or the board?
Uh, I, I do have, I mean, I should have asked this earlier. I, I do know that the taxpayer position has been open for a long time. Um, is that, uh, does that reflect negatively on the audit at all, or?
Um, I can say that having a, uh, oversight committee that's lacking a person is pretty common right now. Um, not that that's a great thing. I mean, just, you know, you want to continue to try to drum somebody up. Uh, I, I feel like taxpayer organization is one of the ones that's difficult, as is senior citizen organization. I think that's a, that's the second one that's tricky. I feel like the, the parental involvement, that's, you can usually get, get that. But, um, maybe when I retire, I'll someday take that role in a living area. But, you know, just, uh, uh, it's, it's hard, it's hard to find. But just keep trying.
Yeah, and we do actively search and try and recruit these positions every year. Um, we're fortunate in Arcadia. The city has a, a robust senior citizen program, and so they're always referring members to us. So that's not been a problem for us. I recently got some advice on how to try and fill that taxpayer position. I don't know if I should share this in a recorded meeting, but it, it's hard to find, like, taxpayer organizations. You know, the Howard Jarvis Organization seems to be the one and only well-known group. And so what was suggested to me was find someone that is willing to serve and is, you know, would be a good committee member, and then ask them to join the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association for fifteen dollars. So the next time around, that, you know, may be my approach.
Okay. Yeah. I do, I, I personally have tried to recruit as well and have had little success. So I know how difficult it is.
Good question. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote then. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes five zero. And now I will thank you, Mr. Glenn, for all of your service to, for our district over the past six years. Really appreciate all of your help.
Thank you. It's been a privilege.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I should add, we are continuing to work with NiGRO and NiGRO. Uh, we'll just have a new auditor onboard, lead auditor next year.
All right, we are to Item C, New Courses for Arcadia High School. Dr. Porcy.
All right. Dr. Hacken's gonna come up first. Um, when we introduce, uh, new courses, they generally fall into two categories. One is state requirements, and the other is areas of interest or advancement for students. And on this list, you'll have both. Um, I think it's important, especially when you see there's a number of courses coming, that if you think of, of the high school curriculum guide where the courses are listed, it's like a restaurant menu, right? So you go into a restaurant, maybe you take an hors d'oeuvre, maybe, you know, order a main course and a dessert, but you don't order everything on the menu. And so I know sometimes when, when we're introduced or bringing a lot of courses forward, it's like, oh, are students gonna take all of these courses? No, they are not. There are many courses in our curriculum guide that aren't offered, um, because students don't sign up for them, and that happens every year. And so one of the hallmarks of Arcadia High School, and I think something that makes it very special, is there is a lot of choice for students, and they vote with their feet, um, as we heard, um, earlier. So, uh, just for the public, when they're, when they see this and there's a lot of courses, no, students are not required to take all of these courses. There's a lot of choice in what Arcadia High School offers students. So with that, Dr. Hacken, take it.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, uh, board and superintendent, Dr. Farnostal. We have to share with you today, uh, eight new courses, four semester courses and four, um, year-long classes. They include cybersecurity, which is a CTE course, Apache Studies, Ethnic Studies, Asian Pacific Islander American Studies, English twelve Expository Reading and Writing Curriculum, English twelve Ethnic Studies, English twelve Latino Literature, American Studies, and American Studies Honors. Now, two of these are, um, one's a CTE course, and that's just from the passion of a teacher, and the, and the other one is a writing, they're still the AP and, um, college prep writing classes in twelfth grade, but this is particularly for expository writing to teach kids how to write for college. And then the other six exciting part is Ethnic Studies. And we have a new law in California. In twenty-thirty, we will, all graduates will have had to take an Ethnic Studies course. So to hear more about these fabulous classes, the principal of Arcadia High School, Dr. Dillman.
Thanks for the introduction.
All right. Hi, everyone. Um, I definitely have been talking about the Ethnic Studies courses for a number of years, but I wanted to touch on the two courses that were proposed by the traditional way that courses come about at Arcadia High School from the passion of the teachers. Both of the courses, cybersecurity and the Expository Reading and Writing Curriculum, or ERWC, were taught by Arcadia staff members in previous districts. And now that they've worked in Arcadia, they see that this would meet a need and an interest of our students. Uh, cybersecurity was brought to us by our, uh, engineering and robotics teacher, Mr. Trent. He taught it in his previous district. At Arcadia High School, he advises the Cybersecurity Club, and he sees, you know, a real expressed interest in this course and as a real potential career for, for some of our students. So it would be exposure to, you know, something they might pursue in the future. And the ERWC class was, uh, developed about twenty years ago in California by English teacher, high school English teachers, and Cal State professors. And it was specifically designed to help high school seniors be ready to be successful in college reading and writing. Now, many of our students are more than prepared to be successful in college, but it doesn't mean that all of our students feel confident in this area. So this course is specifically designed to help students be successful and feel like they can be successful in college. And those were proposed in the traditional way, through the passion of a teacher, vetted by their departments, and then following the process at the high school of being presented to department chairs, our, uh, school site leadership team, which includes teachers, counselors, classified staff members, students, which Michelle is one of our student representatives, and parents. So, um, all of these courses have gone through that full process, but these are the two courses that were very organically developed. The other courses, uh, uh, here this evening for approval, um, fall under the AB one-oh-one, which was passed in twenty-twenty-one, which requires the class of twenty-thirty to complete an Ethnic Studies graduation requirement. The state allows this to be met in a variety of ways, through a standalone semester course, which we have several options, or be integrated into an existing course. Many of our students are passionate about this subject, so there are courses where they could, you know, really dive in and, and learn a lot and go on to the next course. Um, many of our students also have their four-year plan mapped out in fifth grade, and this is throwing a wrench into, into their path. So we want to make sure, you know, our first priority is that students graduate from high school and are prepared for the life they want beyond. So we want to make sure that we're integrating these courses into courses that are already required for graduation. So students have choice. This is a topic which may or may not be passionate to students, and there are a variety of ways that they're going to be able to meet this requirement. Um, the first are the standalone one semester elective courses. The first is an Ethnic Studies course. The state provided model curriculum, which is different from like a standards and a framework of skills you must achieve. This was an example of a curriculum that schools could follow, but the course is really meant to be locally designed and adapted to, you know, local communities. So we modeled the Ethnic Studies course on the model curriculum, but we also are offering an Apache Studies course. And Mr. Finn and Mr. Kearney left for Arizona today. They should be there right now, and they'll be in CBIQ tomorrow. So obviously, we have a very long and important history with the Apaches, and we want our students the opportunity to learn more about their culture. And we have an existing AAPI class, which we learned about last year? Yes, maybe in the, in recent years. And this course isn't a new course for the high school, but it's here for approval to meet the Ethnic Studies requirement. The state provided dozens of examples of courses, aside from, you know, a straight Ethnic Studies course, that would meet the requirements of the law. So those are our standalone semester courses. Students, um, again, only need to take one of these courses, and they have choices, um, within topics that might appeal to our students. The other courses are integrated into existing graduation requirements. And there are two options in Senior English, and there are two options in eleventh grade history. So the integrated courses follow the existing, um, standards and framework for each course, whether that's English twelve or whether that's United States history. And it incorporates the themes of Ethnic Studies into the course. So the English courses are an Ethnic Studies, um, English literature course. So the Ethnic Studies course focus, the traditional model curriculum focuses on four main areas, um, uh, Latino studies, African-American studies, um, indigenous or Native American, and Asian-American. So the Ethnic Studies literature would focus on, uh, works by these authors and more. The next class is a Latina, Latino, Latinx literature course, which is exactly what it seems like. It's a very traditional literature course that traces works by these authors in a historical manner, from, you know, early, early American literature, early Latin American literature, to current. So that's really straightforward. The next courses are, for eleventh graders, they are American Studies and American Studies Honors. This integrates the United States history framework and standards with the themes of Ethnic Studies. And students would, in both of the English twelve and the American Studies courses, meet both the eleventh grade social science or the twelfth grade English, uh, graduation requirement and the Ethnic Studies requirement. So the American Studies, uh, follows United States history, and it incorporates a, a different lens by which students view and examine historical events. All right. And, sorry, just one more thing. Um, United States history and AP United States history will, of course, be, yeah, yeah. All right.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, the, uh, cybersecurity and maybe the, I mean, are any of the, are, are these A through G?
Oh, that's such a good question. Yes. So, yes. So the first step is that these courses would be approved by, by our board, and the next step is they would go for UC approval or A through G approval. That portal opens in February, so these courses would move in February on to UC approval. They would, students would already be potentially signing up for them. And it's, it's typical for any new course, the first time it's offered, in the curriculum guide, it's listed as pending UC approval. And we ensure that it gets UC approval. We've never had a situation where it doesn't become A through G or UC approved. Um, and if there were ever an issue with that, we would work with students and help them choose another class if they wanted.
Um, on the, uh, honors, American, sorry, American Studies Honors, I know that, like, the current US history offerings are US history, honors US history, and AP US history. And the honors gets you that bonus when you're reporting your GPA or something like that. Does this one also do that, or?
Yes. So there has long been a discussion in the history department of should we have both an honors course and, as Brett knows, an AP US history course? And this American Studies answered that question, that there will be the college prep US history course and the AP US history course. So there are like, um, a college prep level and an advanced level, and for American Studies, they'll be the same, the college prep level and the honors version. So whichever course you take, you would still have access to that GPA box.
I'm, I must have missed that when you said that earlier. So we were gonna get rid of regular honors US history.
Honors US history, that's been a discussion for a long time, with or without these courses. That was likely to change.
Okay, okay. Sorry if I wasn't paying close enough attention.
I don't think I mentioned that, so thank you. Yeah.
Dr. Dillman?
Yes.
What, uh, what is the, can you tell me the thinking behind, uh, having, concentrating on English twelve in terms of, um, why twelfth grade for Ethnic Studies?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, for, Arcadia has a unique model for English twelve. Um, we have English nine, English ten, English eleven, and in, in twelfth grade, uh, students have, uh, really like elective choices within English twelve. Like currently, we have, um, Myth, Sci-Fi, Search Tree Human Potential, Women's Lit, AP Lit, and World Lit and Brit Lit. Yes. We don't always have one. Like Brett said, like, sometimes students sign up for things and sometimes they don't. This year, we, we have that. In years past, we haven't. So this would be, these courses would be additional twelfth grade options. That's where it fits best for Arcadia High School at this time.
Um, because the graduation requirement, it's not until the twenty-thirty graduating class, um, so these, or is the expectation that students will get to, um, take these courses, the twelfth graders will take them next year if they wanted to?
So the law requires that the class of twenty-thirty meet this requirement. These are current seventh graders. The law also requires that next school year, in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year stu- schools start offering them. So all of these courses will be offered for any student, depending on their grade level, to take. Um, so yes, they could be offered as soon as next year because it's not a requirement yet. We really don't know if students will start to sign up for them yet. You know, we'll, we'll find out.
It might be a good, like, almo- almost a pilot, right, to?
That's how we're looking at it. We have at least a year to, you know, get our skills down before the students who need it for graduation enter the high school.
Are there a lot of, um, how many teachers are gonna be teaching on these, each of the courses? Like, just one, one kind of each, or are there gonna be multiple?
We don't know. Like, it totally depends on how many students sign up for them. Because when we, like, it was really important to us to offer choices. So we could have five sections of American Studies, one section, zero sections. It really depends on how many sections are offered and what else students sign up for in the department. So the only thing that's easy to predict is, like, we know how many twelfth graders will be taking English twelve. So the only thing that's easy to predict is like, we know how many 12th graders will be taking English 12, because every 12th grader must take English at the high school. For all of these other subjects, they can meet them in different ways, including summer school. So we'll see. But the courses have been developed in a really different way than the ones I mentioned before. In the 20, this, the bill was passed in 2021. That year, in 2122, we were focused on reopening schools. And the next year, we talked about how do we want to pursue these courses? Like, do we want standalone? Do we want integrated? Maybe both is the best answer. And the next year, which was last year, two social studies teachers had dedicated time throughout the year to develop the courses. They're very passionate about them. They've become very knowledgeable about them. They and other teachers were able to attend professional development. So we probably have seven, eight teachers who've attended various professional developments on these topics. And any of them could be teaching these. I mean, some teachers are more excited about, you know, teaching maybe American Studies, and some are more excited about ethnic studies. So it'll depend on the numbers and who's ready.
I think something that's important too, that I know Dr. Dillman and the high school was very in their planning, is while we have many students that enter Arcadia High School in 9th grade and go all the way through 12, we also have a number of students that come from out of state or from other countries. And that, this requirement for ethnic studies is required for them too. So the moment they enter a California high school, that's one of their graduation requirements. And so the uniqueness of the 12th grade English model, where it is, you're taking full 12th grade English, but it's in two semesters, was a very good match for those courses. And it doesn't, it allows for a student who comes from another state to not now have to figure out how to take another class. It can literally just fit into their, you know, pathway to graduate with the 12th grade English and/or meet UC state or UC college requirements in that manner. And so I thought it was very well thought out, that the high school really, you know, thought of it almost as a puzzle piece first. And then let's look at, you know, what the course is going to look like, but first, where should it fit? Not every district is doing this. Some are offering it, you know, in earlier grades, and I'm not sure how they will meet the needs of students who come later, because it is still a requirement. And so it's almost a fail-safe in that senior year to have those courses available there for students who transfer in. You know, even second semester, you know, a parent gets moved, they get transferred. We have a world famous hospital next door where people move in all the time. And so it is really a fail-safe for students who might move in at, at any moment in time into Arcadia High School. So extremely well thought out.
Question, so let's say they might be able to like double dip too, right? You could take American Studies your junior year and then get one of the specialized English that would, and you've like hit ethnic studies requirement twice, right?
Absolutely.
But if a kid's interested, that's great, so there's even more layers to it.
Yeah, exactly. There's, for people who are interested in this topic, there'll be many, many options. And for people who are, you know, maybe just solely STEM focused, and they are taking these classes for graduation requirements, we understand both paths, and we want to accommodate all of our students. Okay, thank you.
Last question, sorry.
Yeah.
One more question. For the standalone semester courses, I noticed that they're only 10th through 12th grade. Is there a reason why 9th grade are going to be able to take those?
Well, in, at the high school, our 9th graders take world history. So every, every 9th grader takes world history, and that pretty much takes up that period. Most of our students are choosing between, because of all the required courses for 9th grade, if they're going to take a science, which is biology, or a world language. And there's really just not an opportunity to fit in the way our courses are, are designed. And 10th grade is where, really where they have the opportunity to, to take that schedule-wise. And our, you know, we haven't done this yet. Our teachers are predicting that the conversation level in these courses might be more appropriate for 10th through 12th grade.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to keep this really short. Thank you very much for listening. Great questions, as usual. I just want to, and she's way too humble, but the way that the high school developed this is really quite phenomenal. So many people I've been talking to at the district level, they, it was sort of top-down. We've got to do this. This is what you're going to do. It was all organic, and it was all developed by the teachers and the administration. And kudos to them because they've done an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dillman. Thank you, Dr. Hacking. All right, I need a motion for this item.
I'm to approve the new courses for Arcadia High School, which were just listed by Dr. Dillman and Dr. Hacking for us. I'll second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Chavez, second by Mrs. Vargo. Discussion or comments, Ms. Van?
Sure. I think I just want to reiterate how grateful, like, my peers and I are for the ability to choose. With so many different requirements, you're able to like introduce ethnic studies and have that diversity, which the state is pushing for, but also allow everyone to be able to take a class that is not only like tailored for their schedule. Like if someone is really heavy into AP courses or really wants to do STEM, like all the students at Arcadia are going to be able to like find a course that they can actually be interested in. And I heard that a lot during, when the students were discussing the ethnic studies requirements with Dr. Dillman and Estha Saltean. I'm just very, very grateful.
I did just want to say, I, I really do appreciate the writing classes for the 12th graders. I think actually that's like the perfect place to put it, right before they go off to what they're going to do and anything they do, whether it's college, technical, writing is such a huge component now. And if you do it earlier, they forget. So I, I'm excited to see how that goes.
I'll just piggyback on that. Like, I had a 12th grade specialized writing class, and it was immensely helpful. So I think that's going to be a really good option for our students. And I also just want to shout out, I know how much work was done on the ground by the teachers who took all the time to process so much of the information and bring it and really tailor it to our school. So thank you, because that just, that was a massive undertaking.
I have one last question that came up as she was talking. When it comes to, like, let's say a kid wants to take AP English or whatever the English, English Lit and AP US History. Then does that mean they need to take a, they have to take the ethnic studies or Apache, Apache studies one semester option?
For, for students who like already have their plan and they're taking the AP versions of English and history, they would have to take a semester option. But I think that it could be a semester option, it could be what students take in summer school. Our students struggle to balance all of their activities and all of the requirements as it is. This will be part of that puzzle for each student and family.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
I don't have anything necessarily new to add, but it is important, so I'll just double down and piggyback, I guess. Yeah, I really appreciate the variety and the breadth of choices. I think it will serve our community well, our students well, in terms of seeking what they're interested in. And I'm excited to see what, what those are, right? And also kind of, again, reiterating the gratitude and thanks for the folks who are putting these courses together. As someone who's also putting a ethnic studies course, yeah, I know how much work it takes and the thought and the intention to put them together. So, yeah, really appreciate it and looking forward to ERWC as well. I know that's a huge push in our teacher credential programs to have ERWC taught by, by teachers and to students. So appreciate that offering too. All right. That concludes our discussion. Unless there's anyone else. And I will call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Okay, IMD, First Interim Financial Statement Certificate of Solvency, October 31st, 2024.
Yes. Good evening. Yeah, sorry, I'll do a quick introduction, David, as the monitors come up. So most of you know, some of you may not know, David Vong, our fiscal director. He'll be presenting on First Interim. First, I'd like to thank and apologize to our Baldwin Stalker audience. Appreciate your patience. The December board meeting is always very business-heavy with the audit and everything. So it'll be an interesting evening for you guys. We start the school year in July with an adopted budget. Twice during the school year, we update the budget, and this is the first one of those. It's the first interim, and then we close out the year in June. And this is not your typical first interim. Usually, they're pretty ho-hum yawn, but this is an exciting one.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But we will, we will definitely shift gears a little bit. I'm going to be throwing out a lot of numbers, and I do realize that I, I believe this is probably the first budget-related presentation I'm sharing with the board, with Ms. Vargo. So I will try to keep in mind, as I go through and I mention acronyms, I will expand on those acronyms. But please let me know if there's anything that I skip. So I'm going to go ahead and jump right in. So I will mention that with the First Interim Report, I think overall the results are, are good. I think we're, the trend is positive in terms of how we're looking on the First Interim Report. There's very few changes on the interim report, and what I'll be focusing on primarily are changes from our original adopted budget. The First Interim Report is an opportunity for us to update our annual budget with actuals for the first four months. So basically, in the First Interim Report, we have actuals in terms of revenue and expenses from July through October, and we are pre-projecting the remainder of the year through June 30th. And so the key changes in the First Interim Report, again, these are changes versus what we had in the adopted budget that was adopted back in June of 2024. The first one here is the increase in our LCFF funding. It's good news because that increase is primarily driven by our increase in enrollment. And I'll jump into more details in subsequent slides in regards to the details behind some of these changes. One thing I wanted to mention about the, I'm sorry, and the LCFF is our local control funding formula. It's our primary source of revenue from the state, which basically funds us primarily based on student attendance and for our unduplicated pupil count. And the unduplicated pupil count are, they're made up of our low-income EL students and foster youth. And what I wanted to mention here with the LCFF is the COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment for our LCFF funding. What we're using in the First Interim and what was used in the adopted budget, every time we, every time I provide like a budget update and a projection, we always look at the current year and two years out. So the 25, 26 COLA was at 2.93%. That's what we have, that's what we're still reflecting in the First Interim Report. But we just wanted to mention that the LAO, which is the Legislative Analyst's Office, they're essentially the Department of Finance for the legislators versus the Department of Finance, which is really the, you know, the finance department for the governor. And they released an article recently, and they predict that the COLA for 25, 26 is likely going to decrease by half a percentage point to 2.46%. We'll get a better idea when the governor provides his January budget proposal. But that half percentage point decrease for us is about half a million dollars a year. So if that materializes for the budget year, for that budget year in 20, in terms of 25, 26, and the two out years, that amounts to about a million and a half dollars. So hopefully, that does not materialize. The other, the other item, the other adjustment we have in First Interim is adjustments to staffing. There's not too much in terms of the financial impact, but what we're reflecting here is some increases in staffing. We had an increase in staffing for, for salaries and benefits for our Director of Student Support Services, Mr. Anderson, who was appointed earlier this year from the coordinator position. And we also added a TK instructional aid. Right, right after, I think we were done with the adopted budget, I think we added a TK class at Longley. So we had to add the aid to support that class. And I'll, I'll talk to the numbers in a subsequent slide in terms of quantifying these, these, these costs. The other item under the adjustments to staffing was, I just, it was kind of housekeeping. We shifted some costs for our counselors, which a portion of our counselors are being funded with one-time block grant funds. Back in 22, 23, we had two large one-time block grants. And we have a plan in place, and this was just a little bit of housekeeping. It's about $100,000. There's no impact to the overall general fund. It's just shifting expenses from restricted to unrestricted. And the most significant change in the First Interim Report is removing incoming contributions to the general fund. And I'll get into this more in a subsequent slide, but it, it might sound a little counterintuitive, because when we look at these charts, the change in fund balance is getting worse. However, it's because our reserve in the general fund has improved based off of how we actualized last year in 23, 24, that we did not need the contributions that were initially budgeted from other funds to come into the general fund to keep us above the minimum requirement in terms of reserves in the general fund, which I'll get into. So on this slide, we're looking at these, these charts represent the entire general fund, so both unrestricted and restricted funds. On the left-hand side, we've got the revenue, and in each one of these tables, we've got actual results for the last two years, for 22, 23, and 23, 24. The third bar is our adopted budget, what we adopted back in June. And the bar in the far right with the, the outline is our First Interim results. And to simplify how I'm sharing this information, I just wanted to mention that the, under, within our expense chart, we also, I also incorporated what we refer to as other sources and uses. So besides revenue and expense, what also impacts our change in fund balance is transfers and contributions between other funds. So the other sources and uses is actually, for the sake of simplicity on these charts, I am embedding, I'm combining the other sources and uses, which are like, which are transfers and contributions, under expenses. So keeping that in mind, you'll see that for revenues, revenues overall in the general fund are, is increasing by $4.1 million versus where we were in adopted budget. The expenses are increasing, so there's a, it's a negative impact there. It's increasing by 7.2 million versus the adopted budget. And again, the bulk of that 7.2 million dollar increase is the contribution that we've removed, that we initially had planned incoming to the general fund from our two, two other funds, primarily Fund 20, which is our retiree benefits fund, and our tech reserve fund. That was, that was 40.2. And so you see that overall, the impact to our change in fund balance, we're currently looking at on the chart on the far right, you see that we're at a deficit of $12.7 million. So the, you see how it basically got worse by $3.2 million versus where we were in the adopted budget? But again, the bulk of that change is us removing incoming contributions, which I'll get into more in a, in a subsequent slide. So on this slide, very similar format, but this is just looking at our unrestricted general fund. So you see that with revenue, that revenue increase of a million dollars is primarily driven by our LCFF. Again, the increase in our enrollment versus where we were at adopted budget. And the expense of $4.4 million, that is literally the bulk of that, is the $4 million contribution we removed. And you see that, so it's a little, it seems a little counterintuitive, because I, you know, we're in a better spot in terms of where our general fund reserve is. What, what happened in 23, 24 was we actualized in our unrestricted general fund. We material, the, what actually happened was, it was a $7 million improvement versus where we were with the adopted budget in 23, 24. And so as, as we, as that improved, we no longer needed to transfer funds in to meet a minimum reserve requirement, which I'll get into in a, in a later slide. This is a, a look at the First Interim results of our general fund for both the unrestricted and restricted balances. You see that, starting at the top, the beginning fund balance, 17 million. You see that starting at the top, the beginning fund balance, 17 million dollars for unrestricted, 38 million dollars for restricted, for total balance of 56 million dollars. That's what we ended last year with, so that's our beginning balance for the current year. We have total revenues projected at 150 million dollars, total expenditures at 161. Gets us to a deficit of 11 million dollars. Here's where we have the other sources and uses. You see how they basically kind of offset the bulk of what's making up the other sources and uses between unrestricted and restricted is, for restricted, it's a positive number because we're making a contribution from the unrestricted and it's primarily for our special ed program. The special ed funding that we receive is not sufficient to cover all the special ed costs. So we make a contribution from the unrestricted general fund. That is the bulk of the 18 million dollars you see in the restricted. The other, the other portion of that contribution is for our routine maintenance. So we're required to set aside 3% of our general fund expenses into routine maintenance to continue to maintain our facilities. And so of that 18.5 million dollar number, about 5 million dollars is for routine maintenance in the balances for special ed. And so the change in fund balance overall, you see that for unrestricted, it's a deficit of seven and a half million dollars. For restricted, it is a little bit above 5 million dollars for a total of 12.6 million in the general fund. One thing I did want to mention about the restricted deficit here is the deficit of 5.1 million dollars. It's, it's kind of unique. It's, you know, one, one of the things that skews our numbers is based off of the accounting guidelines we have to follow. The bulk of that is one-time money. Again, it kind of going back to the two block grants. We had two block grants that we received, the one-time block grants for the arts and instructional materials and the learning recovery emergency block grant. It was about a little over a million, a little over 11 million dollars back in 22-23. We have a plan in place to spend that down over four years. And so what's happening with the restricted funds here is the 11 million dollars was recognized as revenue back in 22-23. So that kind of boosted our reserve. And so what we're looking at here is just the activity in the current year. And so what we're recognizing now is essentially expenses for one time, but not the revenue. So that's why that deficit, the deficit is just the, the current year's revenue over covering the expenses. But the reserve is where these funds are sitting. So we're gonna see this for the next few years in terms of a deficit in the restricted because we're spending down, you know, we're incurring expenses where we recognized the revenue in the previous year. So it's just the timing of when we recognize that. So having said that, with all that said, we're, we have a projected ending fund balance of 43 million dollars in the general fund.
Can I ask a question on that? Or do you want me to wait until the end? Sorry.
Please.
Okay, so the, how long did you say we, we, we recognized income a couple of years ago?
Yes, so in 22-23, we recognized, I think it was like 11.3 million dollars.
And the spend down is over a course of how long?
Four years.
Four years, okay. So 2.5 million roughly.
Roughly, yes. And, and it did vary a little, I think, I'm sorry, just to, just to answer that question. We have of those two one-time block grants, excuse me, the learning recovery emergency block grant is a little bit more restricted and we are actually spending that down in three years. The arts and instructional materials was less restrictive and we're using that across four years. We have a plan in place.
So it's, 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 it's weighted toward the, the front of that, that spending?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I was just gonna add, in a later slide, you'll see how the restricted fund balance grew in the last prior couple of years because of the one-time COVID money. And now that restricted fund balance will shrink. It's a, it's a bar graph that you'll see later.
Sorry, I should have waited.
No, it's okay.
No worries. So on this next slide, this is a, this is a waterfall chart. And I will try to explain the format of this chart. What I'm basically trying to do with this chart is I'm trying to bridge the gap between where we were at adopted budget with the unrestricted general fund, change in fund balance. So when we adopted the budget, the unrestricted general fund deficit was at 4.2 million dollars. So you see that on the left-hand side. And what we're projecting for first interim is a deficit of 7.6 million dollars. And you see that on the far right. These are both, both deficits. And what I have in between are key components of our, of our budget. And the green sections, the green bars represent an improvement in the change in fund balance. And the red sections indicate an unfavorable change in the fund balance. So just to bridge the gap between the deficit of 4.2 at adopted budget to the deficit of 7.6 in first interim, you know, I'll touch on each one briefly. Again, we, we were seeing an improvement in revenue because of the LCFF enrollment count. Salaries and benefits, it's an impact, a negative impact of 200,000 dollars. Again, about a hundred thousand dollars was tied to our Director of Student Support Services. That's about, it was about 25,000 dollars, 75,000 dollars for the TK aid. The other hundred thousand dollars was again shifting for, we have counselor salaries and benefits that we were using for the Learning Recovery Emergency Act. And that was just a little bit of housekeeping. The transfers in, this is where, this is the, the significant change. Again, we're removing contributions that were coming in from two other funds. 4 million dollars in total, 3 million dollars from the retiree benefits fund, a million dollars from our tech reserve. The good news is that, you know, deficit's increasing, but it's a good story because overall, our reserves had improved. Yeah. And the, the last item on here, the contribution of a hundred thousand dollars, that was just overall, as expenses increase, we have to set aside 3% for the routine maintenance contribution. And that's what that's representing. On this next slide, this is a look at our enrollment and attendance trend. So you see here, we have enrollment going back to 23, 2013, 2014. And the bars represent our enrollment count. And the red, the red line represents our attendance rate. And if you notice, you'll see that the bars, the scale is on the left-hand side. It's not, it's not to scale. I, I do kind of mess with the scale to make sure that, you know, if I was to start the base at like zero for each, there would be very little change. I just wanted, I, I messed with the scale for dramatic effect. So, so on the, on the far right is our attendance ratio. You'll see that the scale there, that relates to the red line. And so what is, what is, what I wanted to call out, just since COVID, we are, we are, I think, one of the very lucky districts to see an increase in enrollment over the last few years. So that's been great for us financially. And you see that the bars on the far right for 24-25 and the two out years, those are still estimates. Even though I think the 90-72 for the current year is very close to what our actual number will be, it's not yet official. And so, and the changes for the two out years, they're showing slight declines. And it's based off of data that we get from Davis Demographics who help us with projection enrollment, projected enrollment. And the other thing I just wanted to note was that with the red line, you see that since COVID in 2021, unfortunately, we've seen a decrease in attendance. It's about one percentage point lower than where we were. Prior to COVID, we were always hovering around 97.5%. We're now at about 96.5%, that's what we've seen.
And what would that equal in dollars?
It's about, it's about a million dollars. Yeah.
Significant.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, and the other thing I just wanted to mention was, so for enrollment, we're 45, currently based off 9,072. That's a 45 count better than where we were with adopted budget. And we are, with that 9,072, we're 91 higher than where we were last year. And this is a look at our ending fund balances over the last six years of actuals, seven years of actuals. And the budget, the current year and the two out years. You see that the green section of each bar is the unrestricted general fund ending balance. And the, the blue portion is the restricted. And you can see here that, as Derek mentioned, you know, it grew. In, in 22-23, we kind of peaked because we actually, I think that was, we, we used the bulk of our COVID funds. We now no longer have any more COVID funds. They've all expired and we fully utilize those funds. We do have those one-time block grants and that's the remaining portion of, I think, like one-time money that we have. But you can see how, you know, that is slowly gonna decline because, and it's kind of decreasing because of COVID funds that, that we no longer have to utilize. The other thing I wanted to mention on here is, as you all know, maybe for Mrs. Fargo, for the second out year for the 26-27 fiscal year, we're required to maintain a 3% reserve in the unrestricted general fund. So that little green section where we currently have 7 million dollars, that has to be at least 3% of the general fund expenses. And for us, it's typically that 3% is about 5 million dollars. So you can see that we're above that at 7 million. And that is what is required for the county to approve, for us to certify that our first interim report is a positive certification. If we don't meet that threshold, there's additional requirements that we have to go through. And with that, that concludes the first interim presentation. Again, the, the first interim report basically shows that we're able to meet our obligations for the current year and the two out years. We meet the minimum reserve requirement and it allows us to certify this with a positive certification. And, and that's what I am asking the board to approve. I'd be happy to take any questions.
The seven, the 7 million, you said that was, 5 million would represent 3%. When I did my CSBA training, my MIG training, they did mention the 3%. And I mean, that's a, that's a floor, right? What's, is, is 7 million a healthy number? Is, is, you know, like, is that a healthy number?
So, you know, that's, I feel like that's such a, there's such, there's so much to go into. But the, the one thing that I, I did want to share is that, I know, I, I'm sorry, I kind of like skipped through that at the end kind of quick. But one thing I wanted to share on that, that chart where we had this one here. So, so we are very fortunate because we have reserves and other funds that we can utilize. And so I would say that, you know, looking at that, that always makes us nervous because in the second out year, it always looks there like, oh, oh my God, what's happening? You know, we're gonna barely meet the requirement. It, it's not really that way because this is kind of a conservative approach. This is if, you know, we had some declining enrollment reflected in here. But this is us not reacting in terms of changes to our expense structure. So if enrollment decreases, we would probably look at, you know, maybe some staffing changes, things of that nature. But this, this assumption is that we're not changing our expense structure even when revenue may be declining. That's the first thing I just wanted to share. The other thing I wanted to mention is that within this chart, during our adopted budget in the budget year and the, the two out years, we had projected, over that three-year span, we had projected contributions from other funds of 12 million dollars in total to make sure that we hit that 3% reserve requirement. With the improvement in 23-24, that 7 million dollar improvement, I've been able, and the million dollars in LCFF, that increase, I pulled out 8 million dollars from first interim. For those three years, we no longer need like that contribution from other funds to hit the reserve requirement. So having said that, I would say that if we look at the state average, I want to say that school services of California, they tend to release like average, like average unified school districts. They have it by, by tier, whether it's a, you know, unified school district. I think elementary or high school districts, the reserve percentage is always in the teens. I was like, although this is not in the teens, I think that 7% probably represents like a, like a 4.5, 5% reserve. We have, we have reserves and other funds that we can utilize as evidence with those contributions. From our retiree benefits fund, we have currently about 9 million dollars in the retiree benefits fund.
And then to, just to connect the dots on what we're all going to see by March 15th in the San Gabriel Valley, there's gonna be mass pink slips happening because of the lower enrollment for a lot of districts. And then the one-time money is going away. And we heard this at CSBA. And I know from my superintendent colleagues, without that reserve, the only way districts can show solvency in those three out years is to pink slip staff just in case enrollment doesn't come in or funding doesn't come in. The only way to lower expenditures is to cut staff. And if you don't do pink slips on by March 15th, then you can't cut. We don't have to do that because of the reserves. If we didn't have the reserves, we would be doing the same thing going through pink slips. And for those of us that were around back in the Great Recession when we, that happened, it's, it's not, it's not a comfortable thing to do and it's not a nice message for staff. So I just always like to connect the dots of why we have that reserve and how it served us over the years.
Yeah, and I just wanted to maybe to add to that, I know David, this was before my time. I know David and Kevin and Derek have shared with me that the retiree benefits fund that I referenced, it's currently at about 9 million dollars. I think during the last recession in 2008, 2009, it was about 5 million dollars and it was depleted. And that was utilized to, to prevent pink slipping our staff. I think, and since then, in the good years, we replenished that fund. And, you know, it's, it was built back and it's currently at about 9 million dollars. And we can utilize that if, during difficult times. The other thing I was gonna mention was the, the tech reserve. That's in Fund 40.2. Between the tech reserve and the retiree benefits fund, we have about 16.5 million dollars currently. Which is great that we don't have to utilize. So we, we had, you know, removed those contributions because we no longer needed them to keep us above the 3% reserve requirement.
Is that, are those included in the restricted funds? Like, they're not, are they reflected on this chart at all, those, those other funds?
No, this is just the general fund. So, so 95.
Restricted and unrestricted, okay.
Yes, yes. When we, when we provide these budget updates, we're only required to do projections on the general fund. The, the county and the state aren't really looking at the other funds.
Got it.
Yes. I know that's a lot of information.
Would it be useful for us to have that information so that, you know, like we know what other money is available?
Yeah, I, I have that information. It's just not part of the requirement in terms of reporting when we do first, second interim updates.
It gets presented at the board just after the.
Yes.
It's in the adopted.
It's in the adopted budget. And then, yes. No, so, so when we adopted the budget back in June, we do have the adopted budget. We look at the entire, we look at all the funds. And then we also look at it at the end of the year when we actualize our results. It's just during the first and second interim, we don't, we don't provide reporting on the other funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll pull something out and send it to you.
I'll just go back and look at the.
Well, so, I mean, but you may not know, we can find it more easily. We'll send it to everyone.
Yeah, and I remember as a new board member, being terrified looking at the out years. And it took me a few years to develop a comfort level with that. Also watching how we budget, how we don't reduce our expenditures based on things that we see in the future. We're really conservative and it never gets to as bad as it looks in those out years. And I think we're really lucky that we have those other fund balances because it allows us a runway of time to adjust our expenses without having to make rash decisions, without having to, yes, cut staff willy-nilly like a lot of other districts do because they don't have the luxury of having that cushion. Anyway, I feel your pain.
Yes, is what I'm saying.
We all, we've been there.
Any other questions?
Oh, I, I just had one quick question comment. I know that we were trying to be more intentional about the budget and not be as conservative. So is, I'm assuming that's reflected in here.
Yes.
So usually, I mean.
Yes, for the most part, you know, the, so, I'm sorry, I didn't really get into that because I was just primarily reflecting, speaking of changes since the adopted budget. But yes, the adopted budget this year has been less conservative than we have been in the past. I think, again, because we wanted to make sure that, you know, because we were pulling funds from other, pulling contributions from other funds, we wanted to make sure that, that wasn't done if it wasn't necessary. One of the things, like for the most part, to try to simplify, to, to. One of the things, like for the most part, to try to simplify, to, to address that, in prior years when I built the budget, there are always two areas that had, that had a lot of expenses that didn't materialize. One was staffing, because what we do is when we, you know, we look at our, we look at our structure, teachers, like classified staff, we always assume that we're gonna be fully staffed. But obviously during the year, there's turnover. You know, with the teacher population, obviously, we always have to have someone in front of a class. But what happens is, we, we budget those positions at an average salary, an average step on the salary schedule. But sometimes we'll have subs, long-term subs, which are much less in terms of cost. So that is, is a significant savings, to give you an idea. We would typically see about maybe two, two and a half million dollars in staffing, in salaries and benefits that don't materialize. So that was a big chunk that I have excluded from this year's budget. The other, the other big portion of the change was school site carryover. So every year when we provide school sites with their discretionary budget allocation, they don't fully spend it and the school sites get to carry funds that they don't, they don't utilize to the following year. And that is about $3 million. And knowing that, I didn't, I didn't strip out the entire 3 million. I still kept, you know, I, I probably put in, you know, if they had a $3 million carryover and this is across both unrestricted and restricted funds, I probably just took out 2 million. I would look back at historically how much they spend. You know, they did build up their reserve during the COVID years because they weren't spending as much. But now, since we've been back, they, they have been spending it down, but I know that they're not gonna fully spend that amount. So I probably, of that $3 million carryover, I excluded two from our, from our adopted budget. So yes, thanks for asking that question. So about $5 million of expenses that we typically had in the budget in prior years is not in this, this year's budget. So we're, we're getting a little more, I think we're trying to get a little more accurate with our budget in terms of where we think we're gonna materialize at the end of the year. So that's been a bit of a change this year. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay, I need a motion for this item, please.
I'll move to approve the first interim financial statement and certificate of solvency, October 31st, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Yee.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Vargo. Motion was made by Ms. Yee, second by Ms. Vargo. Any other discussion? I will call for a vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes 5-0. All right, we're on to Board Policy 3515, Campus Security, second reading.
Yes, second reading. At the last board meeting, the board reviewed this and there was a question that came up in the section under reporting emergencies, crimes, and threats. There, in the first two paragraphs, there were shoulds, employees shoulds, and the recommendation, the question was asked, should, should those shoulds be shalls?
You say that three times now.
No, I can't. And so we took us another look at it and we, we agree, we changed it to shalls. And because of the situations that are described there, in real life, we would expect employees to report these. So we changed them to shalls as requested.
Thank you, I really appreciate our taking another look at that.
All right, any other questions? Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve Board Policy 3515, Campus Security, other vision.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Chavez, second by Mr. Aing. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, we are to public hearing in action on Resolution Number 242515, increasing school facilities fees as authorized by Government Code Section 65995B3. Ms. Dress.
Yes. Okay, so one of the ways that we, or all school districts in California are able to support their facilities program is through charging what we call developer free fees. Anytime in the community when a new building goes up, a residential building, or a house is remodeled and the square footage is expanded, they pay a permit fee to the city and they also pay a developer fee to the district. The idea being that with more square footage of housing, more students are gonna show up. And so this is a way for districts to receive funding in advance so that they can make sure that we have, so that we can make sure that we have sufficient facilities for those new students that may appear. So every two years, the state of California reviews, you know, the cost of construction in school facilities. And typically, each of those two years, they increase the Level 1 fees that we are able to charge. They did that in January of 2024. Yeah, it's been a while, but we're, we're finally getting to it. We're a little busy, but we're getting. So anyway, for residential construction, the new allowable Level 1 amount is $5.17 a square foot. And for commercial constructions, it's 84 cents a square foot. So for us to begin charging these higher rates, we have to do a developer fee justification study, which was done for us by King Consulting and is attached. And the conclusion was that we are justified in charging those higher, the newer rates. We have to provide a notice of this public hearing, which we did, we advertised in the paper twice as required. And then we'll do the public hearing this evening as well, I believe. And just a quick summary or a couple important points from the actual report, the justification study. The study is based on school loading capacities, which are very different than reality. You know, it's like, we have schools, our kids all fit. So why, why are we justified in charging more because we need more space? I mean, we actually do need more space. But I just wanted to point out that the state loading standards for how many kids go in a classroom are lower than what we actually put in our classroom and all districts put in the classroom. And that helps create that need for us that justifies the increase in our, our rates. And then the only other thing I'll mention about the study is that for each new residence that's built, apartment, home, you know, on average, that turns into .25 of a new student. So for every new apartments that come online in the city, that's one new student in the district. And that's actually a low rate compared to statewide averages, but it's where we are. And so this evening, the, the, the action that you're taking is to approve the report and then approve the, the new higher developer fee rates.
So we have a public hearing first, so I will, let me see, make sure I do this right. I will open the public hearing. Come on down. And there are no comments, so I'll close the public hearing. And I need a motion for this item. Or actually, first, do we have any other questions? I'm sorry. Yes, I need a motion for this item.
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-25-15, increasing school facilities fees as authorized by Government Code Section 65995B3.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Ms. Vargo, second by Ms. Yee. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Dressel.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just add, these will go into effect in 60 days. So that we now sort of post a public notice that this change is occurring and go into effect in 60 days.
Those, those sounds fast.
Well, no, we'll expect to see a lot of submissions prior to that. To get in is the lower. Thank you.
I just have a, like a logistical question. If somebody pays these fees and then doesn't add on to their house, I know they can request their fees back. If they don't, are they covered for the future? Like if they decide to add on in 10 years?
No. I, I will say that we have some leeway in making those decisions. But in, in your example, if someone comes back 10 years later, I would ask them to pay again. We, we try to work with developers and homeowners. I mean, yes, there's deadlines and there's statutory limitations. But I, I try not to be super strict in that case. But there are times where, you know, people just really have dropped the ball and where, and if it's been a really long time. But yeah, that we would ask them to pay again. But again, I, we do try and work with them, yeah.
Okay, we are to G. Items removed from the consent agenda and there were no items removed. So we move on to information items and thank you for your patience, Bulldogs. We are to your item A, Report on Baldwin Stalker Elementary School Board Learning Walk, Dr. Forsey.
That's exactly what I was gonna say, patient Bulldogs. I know your visit was after, after Veterans Day and there was a lot of people out of town. Fenton was doing his civic duty, jury duty. Thank you for your service.
Scott, can you drop the monitors, please? Thank you, appreciate that.
And I was disappointed and during the jury selection, I did express my disappointment to the judge.
Thank you. So we had Board Member Vargo with us for your digs, Baldwin Stalker digs into data, small groups, and mathematics. It was a fabulous visit. And personally, your willingness to share your walk through, you're looking at student data and sharing the parts that were hard, right? It's, I won't say it's easy, but it's, it's maybe your first instinct to say, let's just share the stuff that went well, like let's just share the, the bright spots. And nobody would blame you for doing that. I think that's, that's human nature. But your willingness to talk about not just the bright spots, but also, I would say, how you got to the bright spots, which aren't always as bright. And the willingness of staff to share and to just be so, so blunt and so open was amazing. I love the pictures, you know, Tim's presentation using the different pictures. You know, a picture is worth a thousand words and really explained your process and your journey. And yet your journey's only been about a, you know, a semester at this point. But you have come so far. The, the ability to walk around with students and staff who could kind of, I would say, narrate a little bit for us. What we were, what we were seeing was outstanding. I love that model. And again, Kelsey, your, your leadership and again, your, your faith in your staff to not be the center of that visit and to say, no, this is your ball, go run with it, is just a testament to your leadership and your trust in your staff. So thank you for living that out and demonstrating that. All right, Mrs. Vargo.
Oh. Well, I wanted to thank Ms. Vanessa for showing me around and my two student leaders who showed me around, Riley and Kavya, they were, they were great. I had a wonderful day there. I always love visiting sites I'm less familiar with. And Baldwin Stalker, I believe this is the first time I've come on a board learning walk, I think so. One of the things I really enjoyed was the Leader in Me books that the kids have and the fact that you're, I remember you saying that data wasn't just for teachers or principals, it was for students too. And so trying to integrate that into their thinking about how they live their own lives was really great. Yeah, I just thought it was a great visit. Trying to think of what else I, your wildly important goals, I liked that, that was amazing. I liked being able to sit down with the teachers at the end in a, and, and hear about what their, what their data chats were like and speak frankly with them about, you know, how that's gone for them. And I just thought it was a, a great visit to a great school. What else do I wanna say? I don't know. Thank you, thank you for having me. I was weird being the only board member ever, since I'm brand new. But yeah, it was, it was a great day and I appreciate the welcoming environment that all of you provided.
Jump in. That kind of iterate what Dr. Forsey was sharing. The word vulnerability is, is what kept coming to my mind. I don't think there's a, a greater value that you guys could model for kids and each other than, than the vulnerability of your own learning and growth. And, you know, I agree, I, I was shocked at how willing you guys were just, you know, able to share your journey, the good, the bad, the ugly, the, you know, what's working, what's not. To me, that just is so much of the evidence of the cohesion of the staff that you have and the trust. Because it takes a lot of trust to have that vulnerability with each other. I, what also stuck out to me that I admire is, is the team effort. How many people were involved in presenting and clearly, how many people were involved in this process? The, the use of the coaches, you know, the principal, counselor, just, you know, it was a, it was a kind of a all-hands-on-deck journey. And, and that, that showed. And, and not just in the presentation, but then what we saw as we went into the classrooms and talked to students. Yeah, I, the time that we got to, I don't think it was scheduled where we kinda sat longer with a, a team that was having the, the data talk. Just being able to ask real questions about how it's going and the struggles and the challenges and, and how you work through things. To me, that was, that was the, a special part of that day. For me, the, the learning walks are, are the best part of my job. It just reminds me, first of all, of why I do what I do and, and the pride that, that we have in you and, and our staff. And being able to see the work that we do here at the DIAUS and what the things we approve and talk about and to see it living out in the schools is just really special. And so it was a highlight for sure of the year for me. You guys are truly amazing professionals. I applaud you for the journey you're on and I know there's a lot of work still to go. But it's clear that, that you're gonna continue through that and, you know, face all the challenges head on. So thank you all for what you do every day for our kids. And thank you all for, for just being that team for each other. I, I know that's, makes work not a job when, when you come to work and you have colleagues that you're in it with, that has your back and you have theirs and, and you guys are gonna figure this out together. So thank you for everything you do. It was a great visit.
All right, well, Dr. Brown comes up. I just wanna thank you again for, one other thing, taking us to your new SOPA classes that are new to your, your site and seeing, that's the first time I'd been over there and just the, the physical environment. I felt like, I felt like wanting to have a picnic there. I mean, that is a wonderful place for kids. And then going into the classroom and just seeing those kids thriving. And again, that's something brand new to your school and could easily be, you know, it's new, it's, oh, that's not really us right now. And yet we were there in November and it's clearly part of your campus. And so, so appreciative and that, that comes from your leadership, that comes from your staff's willingness and openness to take on new things, to embrace new things and make them part of your family. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you to all of our members of the Board of Education. And I wanna say a special thank you also to my, the staff that's here tonight and our staff that's at home. Just a, a big thank you. I'm always humbled to stand in front of you alongside my colleagues and to hear your insights, your positive praise. I don't think, speaking for myself, I didn't get into education to hear all the praise. I, I did it because I love kids and I wanted to be able to work with them. And I'm guessing that's the same with many of the staff. But it's always nice to hear the positive and so we really do appreciate that. As you mentioned, our themes, we have a theme every year. And so our themes this year, digging in to data, small groups, and math. It's always reflective of our intentionality and commitment to moving our MTSS journey and efforts forward for our student success. And you're right, we are working really hard. We are working so hard, collaborating continuously with our colleagues, our coaches, our support staff. We're creating supports and interventions for our neediest learners and trying to challenge our more sophisticated learners. We're engaging in our own professional development and we keep iterating processes to positively impact our students' school experiences socially, behaviorally, and academically. And so true to what I consider to be a historical value here is that, and that I've always hold dear, is that it's our unwavering commitment to doing what's best for kids. And I, again, could not imagine doing it alongside any group of people than Baldwin Stalker and all the colleagues in front of you and all the colleagues at home and with the support of, of our board. and all the colleagues in front of you and all the colleagues at home and with the support of of our board and our Ed Services team. So thank you. It's just, it's really humbling and I love the work that we do because I love the kids that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here tonight. It means a lot. Thank you. Appreciate it. I know it's hard after working all day, so.
Can I just make one more comment? What I loved also in our in our data chat group, which we weren't really talking about data, we were talking about culture, was the conversation that we had with the teachers where they were talking about how welcoming their culture is. And they honestly, I don't know if they could necessarily say what it was, but it was something that's just like like woven into the fabric of your school, that new teachers are welcomed in and and really made to feel part of the the group right from the very beginning. So I thought that was something that I really appreciated, like was was touching to me in that conversation. Anyhow, sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you, staff. Obviously, we have, the board has immense trust in you and your staff. And thank you for the incredible work. We're gonna head into department updates, but feel free, if you would like, to go home and get some rest, unless you want to hear more from Derek about financial stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Right, that does take us to department updates. Dr. Varnasdahl.
All right, President. So we will begin, we may as well continue with Derek, right? So we'll start with Business Services. Mr. Eslen.
I'd like to share with you an update on our beautiful new building at Holly Avenue.
Painful.
Yeah, so we had a fire sprinkler fail in one of our upstairs classrooms. I'm told by Tony, who did some research, that this is a one in 600,000 occurrence. Not one in a million, but it's getting there. So, yeah, I mean, I I shared some some photos, a good amount of damage. We're investigating still what we think might have happened. If it turns out that something was wrong with the manufacturer, the installation, obviously, we'll take take appropriate action and go down those paths. But right now, we're not really sure where we stand with all that. But our our maintenance and our operations people have done an amazing job to get it cleaned up very quickly. We've brought in some outside contractors to to supplement and to continue all that cleanup work and and drying out work. And so it's it's really about getting the water out, drying it out, and also dehumidifying the rooms at the same time. Some notes from the consultant that we've brought in. There's a recommendation by the EPA that that water be dried out of classrooms within 48 hours to prevent any sort of long term growth of of things that we don't want in the classroom. And so by tomorrow morning, the consultant is gonna come back in and check the rooms. Because when water leaks, it follows gravity and it continues to follow gravity for for days. And so we have to keep at it and make sure that we're we're catching everything that may still be moving around. And obviously, over winter break, we'll try and get in there and whatever repairs need to be done, walls replaced, things like that. Uh, I think there's four classrooms that, to my understanding, that we've just, for the sake of giving the kids a continuity of space, we've moved them to other spaces for the rest of the the month, you know, for this week and next week. Just even if things are okay and ready to go, it's like, we'll just leave them there. They can they can do what they have to do. A portion of the library is gonna stay closed, the the east side of the library, the west side will be open, so people can come and go in there. And that's all the updates I have about Holly.
I did want to, I wanted to add, although I was getting the text from jury duty downtown LA. So I wasn't on site, but hearing the the quick response from the fire department. In addition to their quick response, though, I did hear they spent a considerable amount of time helping with the initial cleanup and the water removal. And I just wanted to say thank you to the Arcadia Fire Department. I didn't know that was in there. I don't know if that's a normal thing they do or for us. But, you know, with with the squeegees and the, you know, vacuums and get, you know, getting all of the initial volume of water out of the classrooms and out. So I just appreciate their efforts.
Yeah, and Rudy and Gabriel and Melinda and all their staff, they were all on it and it was a very long day for them. I just wanted to add one other piece of information. This is your statistic for the day and it's more of a financial statistic. We, for many, many years, we talked about California and their education spending compared to other states. And we were 50 and 49 and 48. Well, we're now 17th. Based on a recent study that School Services of California shared. And I think that's from data from, I think, 2023. But on a per pupil spending average, California is now 17th among states.
One-time money?
Could be. Yeah, good point. Well, but then again, all states got federal one-time money. So that would be a wave that we all rode, but, you know, if California gave us additional, yeah. But I, it's better than 48. So we'll take it.
I think that Holly Avenue incident, so we were fortunate that one student was in the room.
And I think it was just like the schedule of the day, they weren't in the classroom at that time. So, yeah. Because some debris did come down, the ceiling tiles sort of disintegrated and collapsed. Yeah, it's very, very unfortunate and, I mean, one in 600,000. Because when I first heard that, I thought to myself, have I ever heard of something like this happening? And I, it's never happened. So, I mean, for us so far. So I don't know if it's a a new thing or just, you know.
And even, you know, with new construction, I, through all the projects we did, you know, I've never heard that before too. So, yeah, it's very, very rare, but very fortunate.
Did the roll-up doors help that they can push stuff out the roll-up door?
I'm just gonna say yes to that without any knowledge.
Friends disagree. Oh, you saw it? Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
The School Services Report, did you receive that?
Uh, so they put out what they call fiscal reports and they're typically one, two or three pages. They'll send them out maybe one a week, three a week, just on sort of current events. And so that was an article that came out recently. If you'd like, I can forward that to all of you. Okay. Yeah, I haven't seen that either.
That just seems like an amazing jump, unless maybe like, I always thought like the difference was quite big. So it wouldn't, you know, it's not within like, it wouldn't fluctuate very much. And then I wonder also if that's an increase in California or a, just we haven't seen anything, right? So is it a decrease in other states?
Yeah, and and they didn't get into the specifics other than saying it's per pupil spending. And that, I mean, that we talked primarily about LCFF, which is, you know, maybe $12,000 on average per student. But then there's all the the state restricted funds, the special ed funding. And again, this is spending, not funding, but I mean, they're very closely aligned. But I'll I'll get that, I'll send it out. It's a short article, but I'll send it to all of you tomorrow.
All right, Dr. Forsey, Educational Services. All right, thank you. There will be no water sprinklers in this report. Report cards for first trimester for elementary. We went home November 22nd. And I think we've reported in the past, 100 teachers piloted our new system. Thank you to TIS for for working with Ed Services and collaborating. The feedback from the teachers was very positive. It's that the the system worked great and was less time consuming. So we found a way to do something new and save teachers' time, which is wonderful. And there's been no complaints from parents about not being able to access them at all. So that that 100 teacher pilot has gone very well. And then next year, all teachers will transition to that elementary report card system. We are moving forward with a TK camp for next year, which will be interesting because we will have some three-year-olds at TK. Yeah. That could be an interesting experience. So you might want to go observe that a little bit next summer. It could be fun. We will also offer K Camp for newly registered students. We want to try to capture all all little ones new to the district. So the focus will be TK, but we will also be offering K for new enrollees. And then we're we're currently, we scheduled our summer meeting for right when we come back because we know there will be a lot of facility things going on and we have TK camp and other things. And so this summer, with where we can, where students can access campuses, might be a little bit of a jigsaw puzzle, but we'll figure it out. From John Tong, our attendance recovery program pilot launched November 4th. And again, we had three elementary schools who agreed to pilot. That's Hugo Reed, Holly Avenue and Lomley Way. To date, we've seen 457 students recover a total of 554 attendance days through this independent study process. So that is 554 days recovered that other, that last year we would not have had. And that's just up through this month. So we look forward to continuing learning. This is a year of learning for us. And then we look, we're, the plan is to roll this out at all of our campuses next year as an option to recoup attendance. And again, it is a win-win. It keeps students and parents out of the attendance abyss of missing that we know, again, the state of California, it does not matter to the state why you miss. It could be a very valid illness, surgical and hospital reason or not. All that matters is that you've missed. And so it behooves us to try to recover that for students and parents to not be caught up in, you know, attendance letters, SAR meetings, SART meetings. And then it also impacts us financially because every day a student is here is about $60 into the, we can put into the budget.
About a million dollars.
Yeah, so that that's approximately $33,000 generated over this past month. Something we've also talked quite a bit about is the language instruction after school. A language instruction program has grown, so it is at Highland Oaks and at Hugo Reed now. It started at Highland Oaks. It's now expanded to Hugo Reed. It's offering Spanish and Chinese through two different delivery models. One is an in-person instructor coming to the course and delivering that instruction to students. The other model is a virtual is a virtual model where instructor does it through the the monitors. Monitors, right, Scott? Not TVs, the monitors. And these instructors are in their native country. So they're instructing, you know, generally either somewhere, you know, possibly in China or in in Latin America. And so two different models, we're testing to see which one works better or is it just some kids prefer one over the other? So working with both of those models. And then our elementary physical activity program that we started has also expanded. And so it started at Camino Grove. It's now servicing Camino Grove and Lomley Way. And as they increase their capacity, they will look to expand to other elementary schools. So those are, those are my updates for this evening.
On the report card pilot, do we track when those report cards are open? Like, can we see how many parents are looking at their kids' report cards?
Does the new system do that? I know the old system did.
Yep. If we have yet.
Oh, so it's a it's a it's a button we can turn on or or not.
I think that would be good data to have probably as we move forward. This is a smaller launch, but thanks.
Good question.
I've seen a follow-up email. We see that you have not.
That's always the first question when there's a phone call is, did you?
Well, because we track so much other data. Thanks.
That's it.
All right, moving on. And as we move on to strategy and innovation, I I will say, when Principal Tillman was mentioning the new cybersecurity course, Greg, I was thinking, if you had had that class in high school, you may not have felt the need to hack into our system and garner that interest that has landed you successfully here. So I guess it worked out for you, but we're hoping to now serve those kids better.
I would have loved class credit for that. I did not get class credit back then. And I'm pretty sure my grade would have been better than the other grades I was getting at that point, so. I did get a job. I still have it. On that note, super excited for the high school. One thing I I've had the opportunity to be a part of in the last several years is the California Cybersecurity Workforce Committee. That's part of a broader cybersecurity committee at the state. And there is a huge, huge need for cybersecurity professionals. So this group has been looking at, what's it look like in high schools? What's it look like in college? How do we create that pipeline of professionals in cybersecurity? And the time I've spent chatting with high school staff about the club that they have currently in cybersecurity, kids are excited about this. They they really are energized by it, so excited about that. I have let our networking staff in TIS know that this is coming so they can be ready to defend if anyone gets a little extra zealous in that class. But in all seriousness, really excited to partner with the high school there. I'm even envisioning, maybe we do a, it's called a red team, blue team, where, you know, they're they're attacking our systems and we set up separate from our live systems and we defend and vice versa. So really excited about that partnership. On the note of cybersecurity, I know I've mentioned the past several meetings, but we are going to be expanding our cybersecurity protections in Arcadia Unified. As we talk with our auditors, as we talk with our consultants, one thing we've heard is we need to, or we really should consider expanding the options we have to track all of the activities internally when people are accessing our systems. I don't just mean students, I mean, people from all over the world hit our systems every day looking for weaknesses. So we're gonna be expanding the software that we use to track that. We're gonna be installing a new alert system that will let us know if anything looks suspicious. And in addition to that, if there is an issue at some point, we're gonna be go back, be able to go back and look at what happened. So I'll continue to share more about that, but we are excited to to go further down that road, including the broader theme of updating our servers and systems over the course of the rest of this year. Other than that, I know last year I shared that we were invited to pitch our AI system at the conference, in which we came in second place. I got clear direction that we are to come in first place this year. And I'm pleased to share that we were invited to come pitch again, or at least apply and and see how that goes. In addition, based on what we shared last year, they'd like us to be a part of the panels to just share about our work. So really excited about that and about AI in general. Clearly, things continue to change. Really proud of our schools for really just asking good questions about what does AI mean in the classroom? How do we make sure kids are still getting the critical thinking skills that they need while utilizing these new tools, this new reality that they're gonna be operating in? And so specifically excited to share the work that we've done around AI, but more broadly, just appreciative to our teachers and our staff and our admin for wrestling with these questions in a very Arcadia way, which is collaborative and creative and every good thing on that wall. So that's it for me. You have to answer any questions if there are any.
Clearly a topic at CSBA. Common theme.
Yeah, I'm curious who who you're collaborating with specifically on on your AI efforts within the district.
Yeah, so the Shannon, the librarian at the high school, has done an amazing job in working with our coaches to offer trainings to teachers. They did several last year. I know they continue to support in that way. I spoke with many of our administrators about some of the challenges they've heard from teachers in terms of, you know, where is that line? When is it cheating? When is it not? So that's within Arcadia Unified. Outside, you know, over the years, we've been, I'll say, supportive of our alum and even some folks who are not our alum who are doing ed tech startups. So I have pretty regular calls with some of those folks in more of the startup side of educational technology, hearing kind of what's going on. We offer feedback. They share what what they're doing. So I'd say, you know, internally, there's a core group of teachers now and staff who are exploring this. And outside, you know, ed tech's always very interested in our opinions about this. And, you know, last year, I spent a fair amount of time with the Stanford AI Group. They have a great program up there. They've really invested heavily in ed tech, so I'm still continuing to connect with them around that.
For what it's worth, I attended the last general session and it was a speaker from Red Button AI. And take it for what it's worth, but he was he was encouraging, thinking of using AI across not just your teaching, but also other departments as well. So.
Yep, I can share that. Yep, I, I can share that, uh, and I, I can't remember, uh, Board Member Varga, how much, uh, you were here for some of the things we shared. So we're experimenting with an internal chatbot that can look at multiple types of, uh, data sources. And one thing we've talked about is what would it look like to analyze some of our expenditures using AI to be able to do that? Uh, we're experimenting right now with integration with some of our Google Docs and Drive to be able to look at different types of documents. Uh, so I, I appreciate that encouragement and I completely agree. I think there's an opportunity to utilize AI in a lot of different, uh, areas. And I appreciate the reminder that, you know, education isn't just about teaching, obviously that's the most important thing, uh, that we're giving our students the, um, experience that they need and deserve and that we can offer. But we also run a massive, uh, fiscal, uh, function, a massive technology function. We really have a, a lot of opportunities and needs within our district, and I think AI can really serve those well.
I was disappointed not to attend that one.
He was a good speaker, yeah.
I, I knew it was gonna be, they always save the best for that day, as they're trying to keep.
Sean encouraged.
I'm glad you attended. Okay, we'll finish with, uh, communications, Ryan.
Good evening, I've definitely used AI in our department for a few things, it's very helpful. Uh, we'll be sending out a press release on Measure AS, now that it was certified last week, so congratulations. And thank you to our community for passing that, so we'll put out the good word on that. Then we'll also send a thank you to our, um, parents and community as well, just thanking them for their support, um, those who voted yes anyway on that. So we'll get that out end of this week, early next week. We are in the, uh, final stages of volume five of Imagine Magazine, so hope to have that out in January with a lot of good information and stories. Speaking of magazines and the internship, uh, the internship was featured in School CEO Magazine, which is really nice, talking about student storytellers and utilizing students. So they had some examples of different districts and how they worked with students and doing that. And we were, uh, our students at Arcadia High School were a big part of that and, um, the amazing work they do. And I can't believe this semester is gonna be over next week. And, uh, we're going to have our end of the party, uh, DCI celebration, which we always bring back our DCI alumni for that. So, really looking forward to, uh, catching up with them and seeing the amazing things that they're doing in college and beyond now. So, it'd be a great way to end the, end the year. That's it.
All right, that concludes our reports.
All right, thank you, Dr. Renostal. Um, okay, we are at consent items, I need a motion please for consent items, A through H.
I move to approve consent items A through H.
A second.
Motion is made by Mr. Ang, second by Ms. Chavez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pos, passes five-zero. All right, we are two comments on the board, superintendent and staff. Ms. Chavez.
Sure, thanks. Just wanna say, um, thank you to all the folks who stuck it out through the early part of the meeting. I was really disappointed not to be able to go to that learning walk. So it was fun to hear about it and, uh, read through all the materials that were really comprehensive. Thank you for front-loading that. Attended the Chamber of Commerce this morning, uh, and got some updates, uh, hearing about how they've redone the infield of the track. And they're starting to be on that circuit for jumping and, uh, anyway, it sounds like it's successful. Be interesting to see. The ACE Awards, the Chamber Awards will be in January and, uh, so, uh, they're working on the website. But I did learn that, uh, San Onofre will be the large business that's being recognized. And then, uh, you know, folks that we work with fairly closely, the Downtown Arcadia Improvement Association, uh, are gonna be recognized as the nonprofit. So, uh, we have attended a lot of their events and participated, I know our students volunteer there as well. So, anyway, uh, that was sort of one of the bigger updates from them. And again, just a thank you to all the incredible army of volunteers that put on the Arcadia Festival bands, which it seems like that was a long time ago. But that was between, I think, our meetings. And, uh, continue to just be amazed at, uh, the thriving arts, uh, in all aspects, the charity dance show and all of that. So, uh, kudos to all the students and I know we're all looking forward to all the holiday programming as well. But I will keep it short, it's been a long meeting, thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez, Mr. Ang.
Yeah, it seems like it's been a while since we had a meeting. I went to Beyond You back in, uh, November. It was a good turnout for, you know, just a preview of a lot of career pathways for us, our students. Good to see that turnout. Festival of Bands, fun as usual. Covered all the, the highlights, important part. CSBA Conference, I think that was, uh, was actually fun. Great moment to learn and see what's going on, a lot of emphasis on AI, of course. I learned a lot. Uh, just a final plug for the Arcadia Performing Arts Foundation, uh, for the Lunar New Year, there will be a performer named Cindy Chow. Very popular in Asia, at least, that's what I heard. That'll be on January twenty-fifth, order your tickets now. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Ang, let's go all the way to Ms. Dan.
Um, I also have a plug, I'm not actually sure, uh, who's allowed to participate, but this is more for like the general audience, if there's any students or families watching. SMW is hosting their annual UCLA Blood Drive, and I think it's a really, really important cause. As I was advertising for this blood drive, I learned that just donating once can save up to three lives. And especially around the holiday season, I think it's really important to, if possible, give back. And so the blood drive will be held on January twenty-first. And, um, all the consent forms and sign-ups need to be turned in before January tenth. So if possible, donating would be absolutely amazing to help the cause. And also, I just wanted to say, um, as like the school has come to call it, happy dead week to the students. Um, it's the final week before finals and I think Ms. Chavez's inspiration really, um, hit the nail on the head with this one. I think it's important to prioritize mental health and staying happy and finding balance before the school year ends or the semester ends.
All right, thank, thank you, Ms. Dan, well said. Mrs. Yee.
Uh, yes, I also too was really bummed to, to Ms. Bowman Stalker's boardwalk. Um, it sounded like an amazing day as always. And, um, thank you again to your staff for coming, Dr. Brown. Um, you guys are always amazing and, um, I hope to stop by sometime in the future, so. Um, and then of course, uh, Mr. Usland, Mr. Bong, always illuminating, uh, financial information from both of you. So thank you for all the work that you and your staff do for that, I know it's, it's a lot. And I attended Judy Chute's app challenge ceremony because two of our student, um, submissions won awards. And, um, every time, it's the second year that I've gone to it, and it's really amazing what these high school students can do. Our two students, one was a ninth grader, Anika Ja, she did this app called Metatrack. And, um, she thought of this idea because during COVID, she, she noticed that, you know, every time they're looking for medications, they were expired and how do we keep track of it? So she did an app to track all your medications where you can scan the bottle, your bottles, and it'll automatically load into this app and you can put it expressions and it'll alert you when you need a replacement. So I thought, I, I think it's an amazing idea. Um, and then the second winners, uh, from Arcadia were eleventh grade twins Carrie and Carol Chen. And they love music and wanted to be able to share music for all, um, including, um, those who are deaf. And so they created an app called Mellow Sign and it utilizes, I guess, um, vibrations and, um, they created a device and it has like vibrations and lights and things like that to follow the music so that everybody can enjoy music. And I thought that was really cool. So congratulations to both, uh, both of the groups for, um, those amazing, um, apps that they submitted. And then for AEF, over Thanksgiving break, um, I was a part of the AEF You and Me Grant Committee. So I wanted to first of all thank everybody on the committee for working through their Thanksgiving break to read, um, thirty-eight student submissions and thirty-nine teacher submissions, um, to select the winners, who I know AAF will be announcing soon. So, um, thank you again, um, also again, really cool to read those applications and just see all the different ideas that our students and teachers have. So, great job, everybody. I'm also liaison for, um, Arcadia Music Club and there are a few things they wanted me to let everyone know. The winter concert is, um, this, December thirteenth, which is, what is that, Friday, Thursday? So their winter concert, their spaghetti dinner is on January eleventh of next year. And, um, the orchestra benefit dinner is gonna be March eighth and twenty-five. So put those on your calendars, those are always really great events. And they're trying to get the word out, um, to the community about music, all the music performances and events that they do. So, um, they're partnering up with Arcadia Chamber of Commerce, which is kind of cool. And then Kevin Sherrill is going to be attending what, some of their events to kind of just let the community know about all the great things that we do for music at Arcadia High School. So I thought that was kind of a neat idea to include the community. Uh, last is, the Saturday is Downtown Arcadia's Holiday Fair, um, from eleven to four on First Avenue, between Huntington and California. It's getting bigger every year and I'm sure this year will be even better with great prizes and a big giveaway, which, come say hi to me, I'll be there. I'm not sure if the district is having a booth this year, but, um, anyway, it's always a fun time, so hopefully we'll get, get some time to come and enjoy. And that is all I have to report, so have a wonderful holiday, everybody, um, we'll see you in twenty-five.
All right, thank you, Ms. Yee, Ms. Vargo.
I have a question, is anybody else going to be able to participate in the, in the parade for the Downtown Arcadia? You will be?
I'll be, I'll be there.
You'll be, okay, so three of us?
I'm Mike.
Maybe, okay, maybe. Let's see, what do I have to report? I saw you all for so long at CSBA. I have nothing to tell you. Let's see, Founder's Day for Arcadia Council PTA will be February eleventh. We attended, a lot of the Arcadia PTA, um, leaders and, uh, Mrs., uh, Dr. Dillman attended the first district, um, holiday event. And that was nice to get together and support their, uh, scholarships. And I was invited by the Highland Oaks PTA President, um, Matilda Young, to come speak at their January meeting. So I'll be doing that, just a little bit of what does a school board member do and I'll just tell them my five months of experience. And I think that's about it. One other thing that I plan to do is I would like to, uh, try to grab as much as I can from the Cvent app and maybe share that with you guys. Put it on, on Google Drive, that way we can look at some of the slides of the sessions we weren't able to go. So I will try to do that and send it to you and then.
That's your job.
Okay. Great idea. Yeah. Okay, and that's about it for me.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vargo. Dr. Renostal.
It is hard to believe this is the last meeting of two thousand twenty-four, uh, so happy holidays to everyone. Looking forward to, uh, attending the camp, the Measure AS, uh, campaign celebration tomorrow at Matt Denny's patio between five and eight. And we've been sending out, uh, invites to all of the folks that, um, helped us along the way, especially the organizations that endorsed and, and, uh, individuals that, um, helped, uh, get the word out, uh, for Measure AS and work for the campaign, so excited to do that. Just, uh, Derek wanted to say thank you again to you and, and David, Corinne. You know, we get used to these audits and, and, and very rarely do we have findings and, um, so it becomes normal. But it, it is a phenomenal undertaking, um, and accomplishment to have a, a clean audit, um, with, with such a, a large organization and so much going on. And as Peter mentioned, um, with some new things, which oftentimes we, we learn about the rules after we get the first audit. So, um, thank you for all of your work and, and, and working with them during the audit process to ensure they get everything in a timely manner. I know that's going on, ongoing on the days when you have your other, regular work going on and they're constantly asking for things. So, just really appreciate that. And then I just wanna say thank you to the board and the executive team for taking the time out of your personal lives to attend the CSBA. It is a, a big, uh, impact on everyone's lives to stop and pause and, um, spend that. But, um, as we kind of look at what we preach, uh, about our values here in Arcadia, um, we always talk about lifelong learning and relationships. And, and for me, um, that moment in time that we all get to be together to, um, spend that time together, which strengthens our relationships and trust. And at the same time, um, learn together and being able to share some of those experiences and talk about that. So, thank you for that ongoing commitment, appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Renostal, uh, everyone said everything that needs to be said as usual. So I've just closed by saying a happy dead week, um, happy holidays and happy new year, everyone. Thank you.